Thank you. Hello, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call the Abington Board of Selectmen meeting September 11, 2023, to order, time being 6:32. As always we do, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and join us for a moment of silence as well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Donovan? So we have a couple of moments of silence. We have Joanne Curtis.
Joanne Curtis. So Joanne Curtis is one of my seniors and she was also one of my very good friends. She was longtime resident of Abington. She passed away on August 10th at the age of 92. Joanne was raised and educated in Abington, graduating from Abington High School in 1947. She was employed by the American Airlines for many years and had a long and successful career at Stone Zoo. During her retirement, she was heavily involved in the community of Abington, especially the senior center. She was a member of the Senior Center Committee, she was a member of the Friends, and she worked diligently and tirelessly in obtaining the senior center for the town. She was a longtime member of the Council on Aging, and she enjoyed her newsroom clerical duties while working on the monthly newsletter. The Senior Center meant everything to Joanne, and her family is very grateful for all the support she's had over the years. Joanne was one of the kindest, lovingly person that I've ever met, and she will be sorely missed.
And this morning, we had a funeral for Abington Police Officer Nick Mazakar. I actually served on the altar at Nick's funeral. The church was actually mobbed. Pretty much all the retirees of Abington Police were there. Nick was a longtime patrolman, appointed in 1972, and spending his 37 years' career as a detective with the police department. He was awarded Abington's Best in February 2001. And he is a testament to his service to the town. I can tell you that there were a lot of old-time residents of Abington at the funeral, and the church was positively mobbed. So we do remember Nick and his family at the time of his passing, and thank him for his service to the town.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Kevin. Twenty-two years ago, pure evil and tragedy struck our nation. Two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven innocent lives perished in the 9/11 terrorist attacks at the World Trade Center in New York, Shanksville, Pennsylvania, and at the Pentagon in Arlington, Virginia. We mourn September 11, 2001, to never forget the thousands of lives lost and their families, the heroic first responders who risked and sacrificed their lives to save others, and the nearly 10,000 who suffer with cancer attributed to the toxic exposures from that terrible day. We are reminded, even through the darkness of 9/11, of the resilience of our country and our community. People coming together to grieve, comfort, and love one another. In Abington, we remember Abington resident Jeffrey Coombs, who was a passenger aboard Flight 11. To Christie Coombs, his wife, a wife of Jeffrey Coombs, and the founder of Jeffrey Coombs Memorial Foundation, we commend you for your continued devotion to enrich our community, its youth, and help make the world a better place. Let us remember the souls we've lost on that fateful day 22 years ago, and in their memory, come together and love one another. Please join in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, we have public announcements. We have Abington Copes Second Annual 5K Road Race and Walk. And I believe we have Melissa Cook from Abington Copes with us today.
Yes, hello. Thank you for getting me on the agenda. I'm Melissa Cook, Chair of Abington Copes, 358 High Street. I need to say that right. I do. So yes, our second annual Abington Copes 5K is this Sunday, September 17th, at 9:00, 9:00 a.m. at Woodsdale Elementary. Our registration is up from last year, but I know we can get it a little bit higher. I think we've added a little bit more this year. We're doing an "In Loving Memory" banner to community members who have lost their loved ones to substance use. So I think that's a good addition and can provide a little bit of healing to families. We have face painting, a balloon twister, food trucks, bouncy houses. So I invite everyone to come, even if you're not registered. It's going to be a lot of family fun. I think it's a good opportunity that opens, can open conversations for families to have with their young ones about the dangers of substances. And what else do I want to say? I just hope this can continue to raise awareness, chip away at stigma, and just let families know, like, let's have open conversations. It's okay to talk about it. We care, and that's what we're here for. And can I just say one more thing? September 21st, we are doing a vigil with Rockland Cares, a vigil of hope and remembrance. It will be at Rockland High School at 6:15. So just another opportunity for the community to come together.
Awesome. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right. And another public announcement, we have the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition reached out to Town Hall to sign a, to put together a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. And actually, that will go up on the website, hopefully tomorrow. September is Suicide Prevention Month. It's important that for people in our community know that you are loved, that you matter. So that will go up on the website. I will now turn it back to the board. Any public announcements? Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Coach Jim Keltner from Abington High School, who was the first coach in Massachusetts history to be the head coach at the same high school for 50 years. Ironically, Jim's sister, Dolly, was Nick Mazakar's wife. And also on October 14th, Saturday, October 14th, we'll have a special town meeting at 9:00 a.m. at Abington High School to deal with questions of the resuming of moving point as well as the fire station DPW project. And then subsequent to that, on Saturday, October 21st, we'll have a special election at the People's Brook Elementary, folks open from 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for that question that would be considered a time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Keltner? All right. Mr. Demazio?
Yep, just one. You can bear with me, it's a little bit long. But good evening, everyone. Over the weekend, there was a post put on Facebook on one of the town's official pages, and then shared multiple times into groups and by other residents and employees of the town. I read the post in the comments and just have a few quick points I want to make. First, we have open meeting laws that we follow in town. Just to refresh everyone on the process, we post a meeting agenda to the public in advance of the meeting. Then the meeting is held publicly and recorded. Oftentimes, a presentation is done or a representative from a subcommittee stands up and updates this full board as to what has happened, transpired, changed, or been discussed. This allows us, the full board here, the chance to see these things and have that representative available to speak to those things and answer any questions that the town or we may have. At that meeting, we then allow public comment, and discussion follows along with a vote sometimes. That's a proper legal way to have a discussion per the open meeting laws. This allows residents to be notified of the meeting and what we will be discussing, then attend the meeting and have a discussion, ask questions, and hear or see answers. It is done in person and face-to-face. Social media is relatively new to things, and it is not how we do things here in town. I think everyone here can agree that we do not get resolutions from Facebook posts, nor should we. Simply stated, we do not do things that way. We do them the proper legal way following open meeting law. Here in a public meeting, which is recorded, with the full board and a representative for the agenda item, and again, oftentimes a presentation, this affords everyone the proper channel to voice their concern or support for a project, an item, et cetera. I have supported this fire station project since its inception years ago. I then have shared, I have supported the shared DPW fire station project and continue to support that project. Please join me tonight as we will have the proper update and presentation on this project ahead of our special town meeting we are holding and the special town vote as well. Again, this meeting is what we do. It's a proper channel that allows stakeholders to come and speak in person and have their questions, comments, and/or concerns heard and answered. I, for one, will not take any information from a Facebook post, nor should you, as we have meetings to discuss these things. Thank you.
Mr. Chapin?
No.
All right. And I do have one public announcement. The SRA, the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, will be holding a public hearing with the planning board on Monday, September 18th, next Monday, at 6:00 p.m. at the Town Hall regarding proposed zoning changes at the former naval airbase. I know there's a lot of residents interested in to see what's going on with the former naval airbase, so just wanted to make sure of that. For our seniors, on September 19th, the developer, the SRA, will be at the senior center to present what the SRA wants to do, or the zoning changes, I'm sorry. And then the SRA will be coming before us, the Board of Selectmen, at our next meeting on Monday, September 25th, at 6:30, to discuss these proposed zoning changes for the former naval airbase. That is all I have. Next on our agenda, public comments. Any public comment from the audience? All right. Hearing none. We will go into public appointments, time being 6:44. We have requests by Mass Electrical Company, DBA, National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc. to install three JO poles on Brockton Ave., including wires and fixtures, and remove two JO poles on Brockton Avenue. It is a public hearing, so I will, we will have to open it up to a public hearing, so I will entertain any motions.
Make the motion to open the hearing.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right. There's a second. Any other motions to be heard? All right. All in favor to open the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Okay. So the public hearing is open. Do we have someone with us from National Grid and Verizon New England? Does not look right.
That's all right. We have the information before us. I guess the question becomes, is there any residents that want to be heard on the matter? If not, the petition is to install three joint pole locations on Brockton Avenue, remove two joint pole locations on Brockton Avenue, and they give the beginning at a point of 50, you know, so forth and so on. Location on, as noticed on the plan attached, which is, I was looking at Brockton Avenue. Various departments have given their recommendations on this, and I have no issue with it.
Scott, were there, because I was looking through our emails here, was there any word from the police or fire about any issues with this?
No, it's pretty standard.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the public?
Move we close the hearing?
All right. There was a motion.
Second.
All right. Any other motions to be heard? Oh, close the hearings, yes.
Motion made.
Yes, it was. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Okay. I will entertain a motion for the request.
Move we grant the petition?
All right. There was a motion and a second. Any other motions to be heard? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All opposed? Unanimous. All right. Our second hearing, time being 6:47 p.m. Request by Mass Electrical Company, DBA, National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc. to install two JO poles on Bedford Street, including wires and fixtures, and remove one JO pole on Bedford Street. Again, this is another hearing. I will have to entertain motions to open a public hearing.
Make the motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second. All right. Any other motions to be heard? None? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Okay. We have opened the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the board?
No. Mr. Chanon, this is basically a request from the utilities for joint pole locations on and near the intersection of Bedford and Lincoln Boulevard. The paperwork seems to be on order as far as I can see. The departments have signed accordingly, unless there's any residents that want to be heard.
Any comments or questions from the residents? All right. Scott?
We close the hearing.
All right. There's a motion to close the hearing. Second. Second. All right. Any other motions to be heard? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Okay. The hearing is closed.
Move we grant the petition?
All right. Motion to grant the petition. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There is a second. Any other motions to be heard? All right. Hearing none. All in favor to grant the petition, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right. The request is granted. Okay. Next, we move on to our action and discussion items, if it's suitable for the board. We do have an Eagle Scout with us, so we'd like to bring him up before. So the agenda item is Joseph Carter, Eagle Scout, to go over his Eagle Scout project to create a kiosk at the compost site. So step up to the plate and say your name and address and what you like to do.
My name is Joseph Carter. I live on 446 Plymouth Street. And basically, I plan to build a kiosk, an information kiosk at the compost site on Groveland Street, to be used for the public to inform them on like opening and closing times and materials that can be brought to the compost site, what things might cost money to bring in, and sorts of things like that. And the building inspector, with design and approved-
A permit application for the project. We held a car wash to raise $800 to fund the-
Project with $45 in expenses. We've been working with Cape Cod Lumber to get lumber supplies donated to the project. We called in a dig safe for the project to be put in. We're going to be coordinating with Public Works to install, to help install the kiosks so that it's safer, and we don't have like kids so close to the road because it's like only a small space between the fence and the road. And it's going to be placed parallel to the fence, outside of the fence, so that people can see it while coming in. And that's all I have.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Very, very thoroughly. Want to be a town planner? Any questions from the board?
No. I think it sounds like a great project. You put a lot of thought into it. I appreciate it, I'm sure the rest of the board and the residents will definitely get value out of it and appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything to be heard from the board? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the project and thank him for his efforts.
Oh, second.
There's a motion and a second. Anything else to be heard? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next on our agenda is vote to approve minutes of August 9, 2023, Board of Selectmen meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? All right. Any changes to be made or adjustments? All right. Hearing none. I will entertain any motions.
Move we approve.
Move to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Any other motions to be heard? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Unanimous.
Yep. Yep. So we have 401. The minutes are approved. Okay. Perfect. Next on our agenda is request to appoint R. Andrew Burbine as alternate to Zoning Board of Appeals and Town of Abington representative to, am I gosh, NAS Board of Appeals. I see Andrew Burbine is in the audience. Did you want to get up and say anything while you?
Not specifically, no. If anybody has any questions?
No, I think Mr. Burbine's parrotation speaks for himself. He's been obviously a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Selectmen, Town Moderator, attorney, and review committee. I think his willingness to come back and serve in town government is laudable, and I thank him for that. And I think he'd be doing very well back at the zoning board as well as our representative to the Naval Station Board of Appeals. And accordingly, I move we appoint Andrew Burbine as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals in the Town of Abington, representative to the Naval Station Board of Appeals at Southwood.
All right. Is there anything else to be heard? Any other motions or a second?
Second.
Sorry. There is a second. Any other motions to be heard or open for discussion? All right. All in favor to, all in favor to appoint R. Andrew Burbine as alternate to Zoning Board of Appeals and Town of Abington representative to NAS Board of Appeals? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. All right. Congratulations. All right. And next on our action discussion item is, we have Derek Hamadi, Chairman of the Fire DPW Building Committee, update on fire station DPW project and possible vote on special town meeting warrant article. And for people watching at home, the warrant article is Article 5 in the special town meeting warrant that's on the town website. So Derek, you have the floor.
Hi, everybody. I'm Derek Hamadi, 151 Cynthia Road. I am the chairman of the Fire Station DPW Building Committee, and I'm here to give the Board of Selectmen an update on what has happened over the course of the past six months to a year for the committee. It's been going on for just about four years now, so a lot of work has gone into it. But the committee was charged with coming up with a plan to design, develop a fire station, and then added on designing and developing a DPW. The committee finalized that plan and gave the recommendation to the town. And since that's happened, the stakeholders needing this help and decisions to kind of taper back the overall project was considered to be decided to be the best thing for the town. This is due just to the obvious costs. When we gave our recommendations to the town, it came to $58.3 million. And that would give us a full-size, modern-day fire station as well with a full-size DPW station. And although it's what the town needs, it all came down to the cost. And this is coming from the town manager down throughout the stakeholders, where the town needs to have these things done, but it also might need to take a step back as far as the cost, because a lot of the residents are seniors and have a fixed income, and we have to kind of take that into account. It's 58 million dollars, a lot of money. And some people just might not be able to handle it because the taxes are pretty high as it is. So adding on to that, it would be a little bit of a burden. And that's where the stakeholders left it. So right now, we have the cost down to $38.5 million, and that's going to give us a fire station that's been scaled back, but still be a building that will survive at least 50 to 75 years. The DPW did have to take a cut, but it's enough to cover what needs to be done right away. The DPW buildings are not going to survive much longer. They have collapsing soul shed. And when we store all of the DPW apparatus, it essentially rains inside in that building. So it needs to be mitigated sooner rather than later. This would give them more square footage that they currently have with this new plan at $38.5 million, but it's not enough to really be a full, modern-day DPW building. But it's enough to get everything they have now covered and make sure that all the apparatus that they have is really taken care of. And if you guys have any questions?
I do have a question. So I know watching on Facebook and stuff, there's been some conspiracy theories about the DPW side of this project. So what is entailing on the DPW side of this project?
So DPW will still be getting an apparatus storage facility. That storage facility will house all the vehicles that need to be inside. They're also going to get two roofed canopies that are going to break off of that. And if you look up here on the site plan that we have up for you, this laser pointer doesn't really work on the TV. But for those that aren't familiar, if you're looking at it at the bottom, that's Central Street. And if you see the bottom left picture, that long rectangle, that would be the new fire station. All the way in the back left corner, that's, all the way in the back left corner, that would be the new DPW area. That big long rectangle in the middle would be a full-size covered building. And the two stems going down and over to the right would be covered canopies. On the far top right of that picture, you're going to see the new soul sheds. Those are desperately needed. And then in the middle, you can see some existing buildings. The police station is right in the center, and the DPW mechanic bays are situated right there. Those do not need to be replaced, so they will be staying where they are. This will also entail moving the fuel pumps all the way over to the far left side. It's a little tiny black symbol in the middle there. So to answer your question, that DPW set, that building that's up there in the top left, that's 13,500 square feet. That's 2,500-plus square feet larger than what we currently have. So it's more than enough space. It should all of the apparatus that we currently have, and also replace and put in a server room with bathrooms and an area for the employees who need to have.
Awesome. Thank you, Derek. Thanks for clearing that up. That's awesome.
That has the basketball courts being moved, right?
The basketball courts were decided to be moved two years- Almost ago. I believe it's been a while.
Where we decide where?
Where are they going to go?
We have partial data.
We haven't formally made a decision.
Yeah, committee's handling.
No. I mean, I've heard- Rumblings of where it could possibly go, but I have no idea. I honestly, I thought- Where the Glenowits Way, the property's on the right-hand side, I thought there was discussion with the previous Board of Selectmen about it, but I don't know if that's still a thing.
Great question, Derek.
Yes, sir.
If you have any questions, go up to Mike, address, name and address, please. Thank you.
Build Arch 37th Center Ave., through the chair. My question, one of my questions. The original plans showed officers from Town Hall being relocated to the building. Are they in there? They're gone. Okay. And the other question, what type of cuts would be taken out for a fire? And I'm not, don't take that the wrong way. I'm just curious what type of an impact it would have on you.
So I have the, this is going back a few years, but the plan, originally, this started off with just the fire station. So going back almost four years, the initial plans came out for a fire station at $32 million. We went to Town Hall and gave a, not Town Hall, Town Meeting, gave a presentation about it and explained like this is where the plan's going to go. And we eventually requested a $3.5 million, almost 10% upfront ask, so we can start getting this process going. We made it almost a year, and during that course of the year, we were trying to find locations to go. Initially, before this project even started, the North School was considered as one of the sites to go to because it was an area that there's just a school sitting there and it hasn't been used. And it's a need that I believe needs to be taken down. But this is before the feasibility study even was done, or any discussion, any experts started. Toward the end, while that process started, we came across the property that's off of Glenowits Way. That was a large six-acre property that's back there that was landlocked. We were able to secure that property in hopes to do it. When that happened, we got a lot of kickback because nobody really wanted to put a fire station up Glenowits Way. It's understandable. There's a lot of, there's a lot of roadblocks to- There's a lot, there's a lot of roadblocks to make that work. But the issue is that there's just no open space in Abington for a new building to be built. Nowhere. We've done everything we could to try to find any place to build a station, because it's desperately needed. We worked with town manager, put out RFPs, I believe twice, to reach for anybody that was in the center corridor of this town. All the way over down the 18 and going over to, for the street. We tried to find any employee that was out there that had any property, and it just wasn't. There's nothing out there that's feasible that would fit a modern-day fire station. Shortly after that, department heads met, and there was a discussion about the issues that were coming up with the DPW. Department heads and I believe town manager met about this, and they decided that maybe it would be a good idea to change the charge of committee to add DPW to it. So when that happened, we, to fast forward, get to your, your question, but the fire station that we had, we left as is, and we used some of the funding after getting approved at town meeting to give them a feasibility study to find out what it is that they need. So they added what they came up with to our project, and that initial number came up to $70 million. So that was absolutely not possible. So the fire department went in, and we started making some significant cuts. So when we did that, we dropped down over 11,107 square feet, to be exact. That equated to almost $8.5 million we took off the cost of the building, not because we wanted to, not because it's not needed, but we had to get the cost down to make this something that's palatable for the residents, so we can actually get, move forward with this project. At the time, the DPW only made just under 1,000 square feet of cuts at that time. We tried to make it work, and altogether, we got the price down to $55 million. Now, when we were at $55 million, we started looking at the next steps and phases and looking at the property, because if we were going to do this with the DPW, we knew we'd be able to go here in Central Street. This is going to be a nice location, centrally located, having all the public safety entities in one spot is not a bad idea. Actually, a lot of communities are doing this now in towns all over the state. So once we got there, after a year of surveying being done, the cost solely crept up to 58. That's because the cost of, as these estimates were coming in from the architects, you could already see that the cost was starting to go up over just the course of a year, so it jumped up to 58 million. We tried to make any cuts that we could that were there, but we've really scratched down the fire station as far as it could go. The DPW was comfortable with what they had, so the recommendation from the committee was to settle that $58.20 million cost. And that's when the charge of the committee was completed, and there was nothing left for us to do. But then, but from the town, the stakeholders range included fire chief, DPW director, Castle Blue's associates, the architect, the owner's project manager, Army Associates, town manager, myself, Kevin Dunham. That was it. He sat down and started just throwing out ideas of what, what could we do? How are we supposed to get this down? Because essentially, we need to know that this is going to pass, because if it doesn't, we're going to be in really tough shape. The fire station's in rough shape. It's getting old, and it's clearly too small. We've outgrown it years ago. The DPW is falling down, so if we don't get this passed and pushed through, they're going to be in a lot more trouble if we don't get it passed now. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't say that $58 million. In fact, if I was guaranteed that that could pass, great, but it's desperate that this needs to be done, so that's why we have to make the cuts. Altogether, the cuts I got made do not take away anything that isn't needed for the next 50 to 75 years for the fire department. We can be comfortable with the square footage I got dropped down, and as far as the DPW goes, again, we're giving them more than what they could now, but it's not as much as they do need, but it's more than what they have now. And we still take care of the apparatus that they have, because right now, we're literally letting rain drop down on our apparatus, so that needs to be squared back.
Mr. Donovan, you have?
Yes, if I could. I think it's worth it just to spend a few seconds to give a little bit of history, how we got from the 58 to the 58.5. Trying to be being elected to the board of selectmen to town manager, have appointed me as, as representative to the fire station DPW study committee, representing the retirees. I'm retired, on a fixed income. The one thing I think we've done in this town, we lose sight of the fact that there's a lot of people, residents of the town, who are on fixed incomes, who cannot afford a precipitous tax increase. So when I served on the committee, I came late, they had formulated a lot of the plans, and the committee did very good work. They were charged with, or we were charged with, I should say, the coming up for a recommendation for what the fire department needs and what the department public works needs. And we reported out that plan, which included the 58.3 million, as Derek has indicated. The question then came is, I'll be quite honest with you, and I want this understood by everybody, I was the one that went to the town manager and said, look, if we're going to make this serious, we cannot put $58 million out on the street for the people to approve, for the simple reason, I had feedback from about 100 instances, going way back when I delivered papers as a kid, there was one woman, and I don't tell you the story, who told me that she has to sell her house, because she cannot afford the taxes anymore. And so that bought me. So I said to the town manager, we've got to deal with the needs of the town and the ability of the people to pay. So I said, we looked at the figures, and I said, I think if you extrapolate out $38.5 million, 62 cents per thousand on the tax rate, if we can put a package together that will do that, the principal and interest on a 30-year bond at 3% interest would be about $250,000 for a year. We were able to achieve that. And in doing so, we've taken care of the critical needs of the fire department, as well as the department public works. We've structured, we've positioned the buildings in such a way, so that in the future, if the town can afford it, those buildings can be built upon. Now, I want it to be implicitly understood that this, we have to do this, and I equate it more to the fact that if the roof goes on your house, you have to replace it. Do you want to replace it? No. You want to pay for it? Of course not. But the fact of the matter is, it has to be done. And that's where we are right now. These buildings are in critical failure shape, that we have to address it. But my concern was, is how are we going to make it something that's going to be palatable for everybody in town, not just the people that work, but the people who are retired or on fixed incomes? And therefore, I advocated, and if anybody wants to know the mystery of how it went from 58 to 38, well, right here, I'm the one that advocated for it. And I believe, at the end of the day, we've been able to come up with a, a plan that's sustainable, that is something that I feel comfortable recommending to the town, and so something that we can move forward, address those needs. The other thing that I want to state, too, is that in looking at it, if we do the principal and interest payment of $250,000 per year, we would, that would probably kick in roughly 2027, 2028. In 2029, the Plymouth County retirement system will be fully funded. Abington right now is spending about $3.7 million to put in its share to fully fund the retirement system. The actual cost is about $1.3 million. So in 2029, basically, $2.2 million will drop off. That's based on the current actuarial fees that the Plymouth County Retirement Association had reported to them, and it's up on their website, so you can go there and verify it and take my word for it. And granted, we cannot dictate that this money will be utilized, but it's an argument to say, on one hand, we've got this expense, but on another, we have a possible savings coming in, as well as if the vote is affirmative on the rezoning of Union Point at full buildout, that'll bring money in. So the horizon looks like there would be money coming in as a result of it. The other thing I want to point out is, there's a little bit of confusion. Proposition two and a half, there's two issues you can do. You can do an override, which is forever, and a debt exclusion, which is a one-time exemption. This is a debt exclusion. It's a one-time exemption, so it means when the bonds are paid off, it goes away. It's not in perpetuity, and it's something that deals with the problem as it sits right there. So with that said, you know, I'm hopeful that we've got a plan that, as I say, is sustainable, I think is financially responsible, and it'll be up to the people to make a determination based on their own situation. And I fully understand there are some people that may say, look, I know you need it, but gee, I just can't afford it. That's fine. That's, you know, you've got to vote how it affects you. But our charge is to make sure that we protect the town infrastructure the same way you would protect your own home. And as I say, I think we've got something that's palatable, that's workable, that we have everybody in agreement on. At the meeting I sat at, both department heads indicated that they were in favor of this. And lastly, what I want to state, from at least from my standpoint, is that if, if and when this is approved, that the North Abington Fire Station on Bedford Street and the Center Abington Fire Station on Rockland Street will be sold. And secondly, I think that the town manager will probably come up with a plan to deal with the North and Center schools as well, because towns, it is not good public policy for towns to be in the real estate business. We don't need extra buildings that we have not only liability factors, but also utility costs to heat them and so forth and so on. So again, that's something from a policy standpoint, we will discuss down the line, and I would recommend wholeheartedly that we cut loose on those four buildings if these are approved. So that's my little brief syllable.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Just as a, because you touched on it, Derek, but I think it's so important for, for us who have gone to the fire stations, who have checked out the DPW site. Can you please explain to the residents, like, the, the physical, the current physical structure of those, of the living conditions, the working conditions, I should say, of the fire stations and the DPW?
Sure. So the fire station, I can tell you, is that they're, they're old, and they, we just simply outgrew them. So some of the major issues is that we just cannot fit newer apparatus inside the building. We're probably looking at a new engine at some point, and if that happens, we might not be able to make them all fit. And the problem is, is then we have to engineer vehicles to try to fit in the buildings, and that's kind of not really worth spending the money on an engineered vehicle that you have to alter just to make it fit in the building. That being said, that apparatus bay that we have, both, at both stations, is right next to our dayroom, or our ready room, or there's 100 different terminologies for it, but it's where we're all at. And years ago, just over four years ago, we actually had a new station come down to look at our new tower truck and look at the size, and I brought up a concern with them about the health factors for the fire department. Cancer's a, a big issue with firefighters, and the apparatus are parked right next to us. All these new, modern-day fire stations are being built with zoning, so that way, all the bad stuff, the contaminants, the cancer-causing things stay away from us during the day, and then there's also mitigation things to handle exhaust and off-gassing of our, of our gear after a fire. So those are some of the big, major concerns that we have. As far as the physical standpoint of the buildings, they're just old. They're falling apart. We've had major roof issues at both stations. There's coping above both of the station twos, the 105 Rockland Street, coping above the apparatus doors are collapsing. We have a regular visiting raccoon that likes to shred our roof, so that's an, an issue that's still an issue. The other major parts of the fire station that we have is that years ago, it was just a male-dominated profession. And now we have two female firefighters on the job, and we have one shared bunk room, and we have one shared bathroom, and that's it. And that's also including our showers, our urinals, and our bunk beds, all shared in one space, and that's, that's something that should be addressed as well. As far as the DPW goes, I am not fully aware of how they operate as much as I am with the fire department, but I do know that they have holes in their roofs that's causing damage, could potentially be causing damage to the apparatus that they have, and the salt sheds that they have are partially collapsed now and most likely won't make it through the winter.
Thank you, Derek. Any other questions from the board? Questions or comments?
I want for Scott, Kevin kind of hit on it already, but can you just brief overview of those, the two buildings, once they're vacated, this goes through, the two fire stations are vacated? What's the?
So they'll be decommissioned, and once they're moved out, they'll be decommissioned. This board will declare them surplus, and at that time, we'll put them out for auction. And we'll, we'll go to the highest bidder.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Kevin.
I know you're going to hit on the schools and get town manager reports by Passau.
Yeah.
Any comments from the public, or any comments or questions?
It's unfortunate that we have to get rid of the basketball courts.
I understand that.
That is a necessity to have. We're growing as a town, and I, and this is my personal opinion, I do agree that we do need a fire station. And I live on Central Street, so this is like right across for me, but I do agree that it's been too long, it's, you know, we, we have to upkeep our buildings, and when we don't, this is what happens. And if we wait a few more years, like everything else, everything, all our equipment, all our building items go higher, it's going to go higher. So I personally would vote yes for the fire station.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in light of this, I am going to make a motion, let the board of selectmen go on record as recommending favorable action at town meeting for article five as it relates to the $38.5 million for the project for the new fire station and DPW yard.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Donovan.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a second. Mr. Chapin, is there any other motions to be heard? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye to approve the board of selectmen voting and supporting the special town meeting warrant article five. Just read it. Funding of fire station in DPW building project. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations, and thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you very much.
And continue to do. And hopefully, the town does, will vote at special town meeting and at the special town election for the fire station.
Thank you very much.
As was said before, I mean, it's like going to your facilities, what you guys work in and what you're able to do is truly incredible. And our, you guys, the fire department and the DPW, they need these new facilities greatly. And to quote, you know, the, the great Anne Riley at one of the town meetings, she goes, if, if we don't do this now, you know, it's just going, like Suzanne was talking, this is going to get worse and worse, and this is, this is a huge step for Abington moving forward.
Thank you very much. And one other thing, if it's all right, that webpage that we were looking at, where the site plan is, that's investinabington.com. That's a webpage that a resident donated and built for us. It has all the information that you need on there. It has a tax calculator. If you go to the town website, the top right icon brings you straight to the website, and everything is on that page. You can look at all the minutes, you can look at the site plan that we're currently working with, you can see the timeline of how this has all come together, and the tax calculator's a big one for anybody that wants to do it. There's a link that goes to the assessors page, so you can find out exactly what your home is assessed for, and then you copy and paste that into the calculator, and it'll tell you exactly what your upcoming taxes would be if this gets approved. And lastly, my email is on there under the contact us. It's at the top and the bottom of that page. If anybody has any questions, I wasn't able to come here, or can't watch any of these videos that I've been coming out to, and committees that I've been in front of, and TV cameras recently that I've been in front of, if you haven't answered your question, please shoot me an email, I'll be happy to answer for you.
Do you have a hard copy for residents that aren't online? Most of my seniors, most of the seniors, not mine anymore. Sorry. Aren't online. Is there any chance that there'd be some type of hard copy that you could drop off at the senior center?
I could absolutely do that. Yep. We just recently were there and dropped off bingo dovers, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah, they were pretty happy about that. But yeah, we'll, we'll go bring them, we have some brochures from the previous town meeting, and we can bring the updated site plan. I mean, I can't bring the tax calculator, so they're going to have to get some help with that part, but, all right. Thank you, guys.
Oh, one more question. For residents who want to show their support for this project, how can they do that?
They can reach out to the. They can reach out to the fire department, or reach out to myself, and ask for a lawn sign. We have some lawn signs out there. We also have a bunch of other things that we're going to be passing out. We have some file of lives that I plan to bring over to the senior center. We're going to be donating those out all over the place. The bingo dovers went too fast, the union purchased those and went down to donate to them, and they took all two hundred of them right off the bat, so... But it just, you know, make sure you understand what's really going on and understand the hard work that's gone into this, not just by myself, but the committee as a whole. I mean, this committee started four years ago. It's a long process, so I don't want it all to go for vain, but I understand that this is a vote that has to go up to the town to decide. But if you have questions or concerns, or anything that you need to know, please reach out, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. Thanks for...
All right, thank you.
Scott, real quick on the basketball courts, because it was a good point. I think we definitely need to keep that on the radar. Obviously, we've got to wait and see how this plays out, but...
Yeah, we have a long way to go, but yeah, I definitely will bring that back to the board and to try and figure out, we do want to put them somewhere.
Basketball, street hockey, there's a million things that happen there, so I don't want the town to think that we're not getting rid of them.
Cleats on a child, you get them off the streets. She loves those little clips, I'm just saying.
So we need to make sure we stay on top of that. I just want the residents to know that we're not getting rid of them forever.
No, they'll be relocated.
I know we, they did some work, I know, on the Green Street courts, but I know that we really need to move the ones that are there, so.
Agreed.
And there's nothing on, nothing more to say on that agenda item. We will move on to our amazing veteran service officer, Adam Gunn, regarding Abington Saves.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. Let's see, I came here to talk about the SAVES Fund. SAVE stands for Supporting Abington Veterans with Emergency Services. Thank you to Scott for paving the way and supporting this idea and program. December of last year, we applied for fifty thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, and we're now taking applications during the month of September for grants up to fourteen hundred dollars to qualified residents. You must be a veteran, or an unmarried, an unremarried widow, meet the income requirements listed on the town's website, and need assistance with food, transportation, or utilities. We're not looking to give money away to those with, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in their savings account. But if you have a modest savings, or none at all, or need financial support, please reach out. You can print applications on the website, or you can get them in person at the Abington Senior Center. You do have to provide proof of income and assets, but those will be for my eyes only. They are, applications are being accepted at the senior center. They'll be sealed in an envelope with a checklist, so again, I'm the only one who views your personal information. We're literally looking to put fifty thousand dollars in the pockets of veterans and widows who are in need. So if you know someone who's in need, or you yourself is in need, please reach out, please go online and apply, or excuse, go online and put the application out and apply. The SAVES Fund wouldn't be possible without the guidance, support, and mentorship of the VSO Advisory Council over the last two months.
Thanks, Bill.
Additionally, most of what we do here in veteran services couldn't be done without the support of the veteran organizations, as well as the volunteers. Just going to touch on one more thing while I have the floor here. Thanks to Wayne Norling, we now have a, excuse me, a third computer in the waiting room area of the Veteran Services Department. We'll be starting a kiosk, not only to check veterans in and get their information, but also for volunteers to check in and out. We now have four volunteers that are coming in on a weekly basis to support the office and the department, when Martha Winaina isn't in the office for half of the week. They're also beginning projects that are changing people's lives and well-being. In June of this year, a volunteer named Carol Davy began going through Abington death records twice a week, and scanned all the death records for our veterans over the last thirty years, which she just finished a couple weeks ago. After finishing that, thanks to Wayne again, who spent hours of his own time taking the Excel six hundred files we have of veteran death records, and putting them into an Excel spreadsheet. And we're now going through and finding widows that weren't receiving the care and the financial support, and the relief of the property taxes if their spouse died from a service-connected disability here in Abington. So we can only accomplish what we do in this department through so many volunteers. And the support that we have here in Abington is truly what makes Abington special. So if you're looking to volunteer some time, and are willing to step up and support our office, then please let us know. Any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Adam.
When in doubt, for Abington Saves, please apply.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda, we have requests from South Shore Recycling Co-op to appoint Chris Schultz and Eddie Murphy as Abington's representatives. Are Chris Schultz or Eddie Murphy here in the audience?
I'm ready for your point.
All right. Any discussion, or?
Second.
Second? I just wondered. Okay, there was a motion and a second. Any other, anything else to be heard?
Nope.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous. Congratulations, Chris Schultz and Eddie Murphy. Let's see, next on our agenda is town manager report. Scott?
Okay, so this past August, we received a final report from the inspector general regarding the Town of Abington Department of Public Works. Report contained numerous suggestions and recommendations, many of which we had already implemented quite some time ago. Some of these recommendations include centralizing the procurement process, establishing written procedures for the disposal of surplus materials, providing inventory control training, et cetera, et cetera. Like I said, many of these things have already been done in by some of them for quite some time. But in response to the report, we engaged our financial auditing firm to review our policies and our procedures regarding these matters, and seeking their recommendations if we feel that we can improve anywhere. So we intend to have them, recruit them certified, and formalize a report that we can use to submit to the inspector general. We recently received a resignation from Tim Warner, who served as a member of the Conservation Commission. With this board's approval, I will post the vacancy on our website.
So move.
The disposition of the north and center school buildings has been the subject of extensive discussion. Our current plan is to solicit bids for the redevelopment of the two buildings to be used as mixed-income housing. One of the challenges that has slowed the process is ensuring that we actually have an adequate supply of water for a viable project. So I'm collaborating with the water superintendent to determine the current allocated water volume for what those schools were, and then we'll compare that to what we need. So we anticipate needing approximately twenty-two hundred gallons a day for the center school, and just over seven thousand gallons a day for the north school, just to get what has been, you know, somewhat viable projects, as described to me by some of the developers we talked to. So again, once we confirm that we have water, we will proceed with the bidding process. It's already, the RFP, we've already started working on it, we have a consultant that we've been working with for quite some time on it. We just keep coming into some little hiccups like this, that obviously, we're not going to get any interest if we don't have water for it.
This might be a loaded question, but is it, are we even able to make a prediction of when we could put out for bid?
Sure. I would say I'd probably have something on the street within six months.
Okay. All right, thank you, Scott.
Hopefully sooner, actually, but that would be a long-term estimate. So as previously communicated to this board several months ago, the boilers at the Abington Library must be replaced before the winter heating season. Estimated project cost exceeds eighty-five thousand dollars. I've already issued a bid package. Please to note that there's been significant interest in it. So the final bids are due on September twentieth, 2:00 p.m. Optimistic about getting the project done by the end of November. If not, and if necessary, will request that the selected contractor provide a temporary heating solution up until the work's completed. You may have noticed that we have a giant new generator right outside this window here. It's capable of supplying town hall to a hundred percent backup power during any primary power outages. Project costs about a hundred thousand dollars, a bit more, is generously provided by the Holbrook nine-one-one communication center. We have scheduled the final connections to be on Thursday, September twenty-first. Assuming that's going to happen in that day's firm, town hall will not have power for the day, it's a Thursday again. Town phone lines throughout the town, other than the police station, will be out of service. Nine-one-one will still work. But we'll ensure that residents are well-informed.
Twenty-first? I'm sorry to interrupt, the twenty-first?
Thursday, September twenty-first.
A week after we get the hurricane?
Carry on. If you, if you can get it done quicker...
I'll go plug it in. Call Tim. What's the worst that can happen?
I get some duct tape.
You guys stay back, you can close by, please.
But again, we'll let everybody know while in advance through our community notification system.
Took all the thunder.
And lastly, I'm pleased to report that Standard Empores has recently assigned the town a double-A bond rating, so that will be very helpful when this, and if the next building project starts.
Thank you.
Question.
Thank you.
Central Street Bridge.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Paving is tomorrow.
Paving is tomorrow.
And it should be, I believe what, they're going to do something temporary with some barriers to satisfy Mastod, so we can open it at end of day tomorrow.
Weather permitting?
That was, weather permitting, a lot of things permitting.
Ah, no.
Brand new bridge is temporary.
Hot.
Good.
Human.
All right. If there are any other questions for the town manager?
Nope.
I will, so we are going to be going into an executive session in accordance with Mass General Law C-30A, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation of an open meeting, if an open meeting may have determinative effect on the litigation, litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares, we won't be returning to open session. So with the motion...
So move.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Second. All right, so, and then a roll call. Mr. Dunne?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne, yes. Ms. Justburg?
Yes.
Ms. Justburg, yes. Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. DiMaggio, yes. Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
Yes, and chair votes, yes, unanimous. We are now in executive session at eight-thirty-five.